Ready, folks?
Ready.
Okay, meeting comes to order at seven o'clock. Would you salute the flag, folks, with me?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Mr. Dunham has graciously agreed to do our selectmen's prayer.
And if you will, bow your heads. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing, as do we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community, and enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us to achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift up our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. Amen.
There are openings on several committees, as usual. Please contact the selectmen's office for a listing and application. Donations for the food pantry can be made to the Council on Aging or the Public Library. The Historical District Commission has Carveropoly games for sale for $20. I had a request, folks, to make sure that we all spoke into the microphone, because some folks have had difficulty hearing some parts of our meetings on CCATV. So, we are ready to go. First, review of the agenda. Seven o'clock, our public comment period. Seven-ten appointments, and we have two, Kelly Gagnon and Dennis Gagnon, to the Carver Cultural Council. Approval of the Carver Cranberry Road Race. Acceptance of statements of disclosure from Mr. Dunham. Town Administrator's Comment Period. Seven forty, Board of Selectmen's Comment Period. Waiving fees for the use of town property policy. Reinstating Website Committee. Seven fifty, minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Minutes, public comment, second phase. Then at eight o'clock, hopefully eight o'clock, Executive Session, if we have one. Eight thirty, projected adjournment. Okay, any comments on the agenda? Okay. First, our public comment period. Mr. Forrester.
Good to see you back, Mr. Forrester.
Thank you.
Can you review your name, Rod, and where you live?
Pardon me?
Can you review your name and where you live, please? For the public.
I was just going to do that.
Okay.
But thank you for reminding. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Rod Forrester, 13 Lincoln Circle, Cranberry Village. Thank you. What I would like to speak about tonight is one of the agenda items, and it happens to be the reinstatement of the Website Committee. And what I'd like to say is, when you go into your discussion of reinstating, that you consider a few things. One being that the Website Committee was disbanded in October of 2013 by a vote of the Board of Selectmen. And it was mainly, from what they spoke of at the time, was Mr. DuHurst had a mandate in his committee that he was to go to his committee and come up with ideas of how to improve the Website Committee, and then come back to the Board of Selectmen, and they would discuss it. That did not happen. He did his improvements that he wanted to do on his own accord. Now, when it was disbanded in October 2013, he was ordered disbanded, but yet...
Excuse me, Mr. Forrester, Mr. Chairman. Could we possibly do this without names being used? Just make a general reference to the committee?
If you need to refer to somebody on that committee, refer to them as the Chair, if you're talking to the Chair.
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you.
The Chairman was ordered to come up, him, his committee and himself, were to come up with ideas, and then come back to the Board and present them to the Board, and then the Board would discuss them and decide what they would do. That was never done. And yet, in October 2013, when the committee was disbanded and basically put out of business, it seems that he continued to run the Website as well. As of this morning, I printed this off of the computer, Town of Carver subscribed to Meetings and Headlines, which was his subscription service. So, it's like, it didn't matter to him. So, I think that if you're considering reinstating the Website Committee, I think you ought to take those things into consideration, and I appreciate it if you did.
All right. Thank you for your input.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your advice. I'll remember.
Not a problem, sir.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time on public comment? Okay, then we shall go on to the next item. The next item is regarding the Cultural Council, and Chairman Mr. Phillips is here, and I'd like to invite him up because, as he told me earlier, the two appointment cities that have applied, Kelly Gagnon and Dennis Gagnon, are not able to be here, right, Mr. Phillips?
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Phillips, 27 Forest Street, and I am the chairperson of the Carver Cultural Council. Kelly and Dennis are not able to be here, because, as Helen can relate, they're on a cruise, so you're not going to give that up. And the other situation is, we have an unfortunate situation arising on the Cultural Committee, excuse me, where the end of this month, June, we lose four of our members. They have to, it's a state mandate that after being on it for six years, you have to step down for a year. So, we are looking for members, and Dennis and Kelly have actually showed up for a couple of meetings. They've been actively involved. They're the kind of people you want to get on a committee, and they've been looking to see how they could serve the town, and they would like to get on the Cultural Committee. So, I did not want to wait until July for that.
Okay.
So, and obviously, what I like to do, people going on the Cultural Committee, it is a volunteer, obviously, committee, but once you do volunteer, you have certain obligations. So, I like to talk to people and remind them that it's a small committee. We have monthly meetings. We need a quorum, and we're looking for active participation, and they meet all these qualifications.
Okay. Thank you. Do I hear any...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept both Kelly and Dennis Gagnon as members of the Cultural Committee.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Okay?
Just a quick discussion. I think it's great that you have two people to join, and I'm in full favor of it. Just for precedent, though, the last board, and I think the board before that usually had the people, the volunteers coming before us. I know this is a special circumstance, but going forward, are we going to want to continue that process, or do you want to change it at this point as a new board?
I would think that, you know, if possible, they could, you know, they could come before the Board and just tell us a little bit about themselves, but whereas this is a special case, because I wouldn't give up a cruise either for this.
There's a bit of a deadline here, as Mr. Phillips pointed out.
Oh, no, that's what I was saying. This is an exception.
Selectmen Row, the only reason I did this is just because of another thing, I could fall down by a minimum of five members for the committee.
Right.
If it was anything other than that, I would have just postponed this until July, but I pushed to try to get it, just for this, Helen, I look at this as just an exception.
Yeah, no, understood, and that's why I agree that it's an exception.
I would not want to break the former precedent, no.
No, this is just more as a discussion for future, in terms of we're a new board, whether, what we're going to be doing.
I invite everyone for Old Home Day to stop down, and you can meet them, they're going to be down there, too, so...
Any other comments? Okay, you ready to vote? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Michelle, five-zero. Mr. Phillips, thank you very much.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman. We also had a member on the committee that, when our office was trying to determine if people wanted to be reappointed for their second term, this individual at the time had some conflicts and decided not to put her name back on the list, but those conflicts have since changed, and she does want to be put back on the list. Now, you appointed people last, at your last meeting, as to who wanted to be reappointed. What we can do is, and the name of the individual is?
Lisa O'Connell.
And we can either hold her off and vote at the first meeting, at our next meeting on July 8th, or if you, because she is a reappointment, but just wasn't initially on the list, if you want to reappoint her tonight, we can get that out of the way as well.
But you don't want to go by June 30th without a majority or a quorum?
Correct.
So, that puts some urgency on it, emergency?
And it's not a new individual, it's a reappointment for her second term.
Correct.
So, does anybody want to make a motion? Lisa O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint Lisa O'Connell to the Cultural Council.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Sure. Will we have an issue with open meeting law because her name is not listed, or can this be considered an emergency?
This can be, we're fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is qualified, and they're unexpected.
Not reasonably anticipated.
Also, I talked to Michelle, and thank you, Michael, for bringing that up, but what we're going to do is, Lisa is going to send an email indicating that she does want to still be on there, so there will be some documentation as to this.
All right.
This just transpired about 10 minutes ago, so...
Yeah.
It falls within the 48 hours.
Any other discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor of appointing Lisa O'Connell, reappointing Lisa O'Connell to the Cultural Council, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five-zero, supporting. Michelle, okay?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Phillips, thank you. Okay, next item. Carver Cranberry Road Race. Old Home Day. Discussion, or want to make a motion and discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Carver Cranberry Road Race for September 27.
Anybody second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. If you look at the map, as I looked at the map, it's a totally different course, and I think most people know that, but maybe the folks out there don't. So, it won't be run the typical race down 58, down Meadow Street, and around back and up West Street. It's going to be run from the school, down Pond Street, and I guess Center Street, back to, back to South Middle Road, and then to the school.
That's correct.
Something on that order. And I saw a letter from the Chief of Police explaining what they needed for coverage with the police department. What else did they have on there?
We're also waiving the fee.
That's what I was going to ask. Michael, do you know, does this, would this qualify for the $50 fee for, that we have for all the other use of Cairo facilities?
Well, this will be run out of the school, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's the athletic boosters. So, it's a fundraiser for the athletic boosters.
Yeah, usually, the fee, though, is regarding shirtless park.
Because that's what I'm just asking.
Yeah. They're not going to be using shirtless park at all, so...
So, we're going to say, in this case, it doesn't even apply, then?
Right.
I would think it doesn't.
That works.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of issuing this permit or motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous support of the Carver Road Race, Carver Cranberry Road Race. Michelle, yep, five-zero. Okay, next item is acceptance of a statement of disclosure from Mr. Dunham.
I'll go from here over to here.
Okay, yep. Maybe you can give us a little explanation, Helen.
Yeah, basically, I went ahead and, soon after being elected, I filed a letter of disclosure, and through Town Council and the Town Administrator, they both felt it would be good to bring this up to the Board for acceptance. Basically, it's disclosing that my son, Timothy Dunham, is a call paramedic for the town. He's also a call firefighter and part-time fire dispatcher. So, that means I have to go ahead and recuse myself for any funding that goes on for, as far as wages, that he would get benefit from. Also, on the disclosure, I did put in there that I was a part-time fire dispatcher with official resignation date of April 26. I was a 20-year member of the Cairo Fire Department. I've also resigned from that April 26, including being on the photo team, so I've disassociated anything with the Fire Department itself. I am still a member of the Carver Firefighters Association, which is an association that is made up of both retired and current firefighters, but is wholly separate from the town. So, that does not come into play as far as I can see. And so, I just, this is that, what's on the disclosure that I filed, and it's just bringing it before the Board for your acceptance, it's saying, yes, you accepted, I filed the disclosure.
I make a motion to accept the statement of disclosure filed by Alan.
Second.
Okay, it's been made, motion and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Questions, Ellen? Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor of disclosure, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four-zero, Michelle?
Thank you much.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay, and now, we're ahead of schedule. Town Administrator's Comment Period.
Don't say that too loud, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, it goes downhill.
As you can see, with all the updates, we have two different rows of updates to do, so I'm going to try to go fairly quickly on these, just to bring everyone up to speed. As we know, we've been focusing on town meeting, and that's been the priority, so there's been a lot of things that have been happening behind the scenes, and I just want to just give a tidbit on what's happening, just so you're aware of that. The Town Accountant had sent out a fiscal year-end closure letter to all department heads committees and anyone else that handles any financial information for the town. All bills must be sent in to the Accountant by June 30. If there are any anticipated bills for work that has been rendered, or services that have been rendered, then the department is required to encumber those funds so that the accountant can pay those after June 30. We will be having a meeting on July 8th, a joint meeting with the Finance Committee, to transfer any funds that we may need to transfer at the end of the year. So, that letter's gone out, and we're going to hold people accountable for making sure they follow through with their requirements. There's also been another letter that's been sent out to all department heads and committees, primarily department heads, with the new soft write system. As part of the new soft write system, there's going to be a different coding for chart of accounts, and so, starting July 1st, departments will have to bill things under a different account. Some of them are the same, but some of them are different. It's just a notice that everyone needs to be aware of, and I'm just bringing it up here just to reinforce that each department has going to be required to make sure that those crossovers occur. Next is the Route 58 easements. We are moving forward, and Elaine has been doing a great job on working through these, but we still have a couple dozen that are left. You have a spreadsheet in front of you. I'd asked you to go through those names, and anyone that you personally know, that you'd be willing to make a phone call to, if you could send me an email tomorrow as to who they are, and then we can coordinate that. Ideally, what we're still trying to do is to have people donate these temporary construction easements to the town. If we don't go in that fashion, then the town is going to have to spend a lot of money with lawyers, appraisers, to take the property on a temporary basis by eminent domain. It's not something we want to do, but Town Meeting has authorized you to do that, and in order for this project to go forward, you will need to do that at your August meeting.
Regarding that, if we do know someone, Michael, can, do we, like I thought about just going to their house, have you got a form that I just take and they sign?
Yes, just if you, anyone you know here, just give me an email or a call, and just let me know who you know, and I'll make sure you have the proper forms and know what the status is, and then that's exactly where I need your help, and Elaine needs your help, is anyone that has personal contacts. This just saves the town money. Everyone has received multiple letters, notices in the mail, phone calls. We're just making this last-ditch effort before we have to go the eminent domain route.
I don't mind going door-to-door. I don't particularly know these people, but do you know any of these people?
I was just saying, I know one.
Yeah, because I...
I should know more, but I guess I don't know as many people as I thought I did.
You want, just give me the forms. It's right off on Main Street. It'll take me a couple of hours.
Yeah, we can certainly do that, and I appreciate any help we can get. Moving on. Where to begin? Let me start with, these are more updates. The Governance Committee, when we, after the Board of Selectmen created the Governance Committee and then authorized me to be in charge of appointing the members, I originally appointed all the members for a six-month term to get us through town meeting. So, my intent is to reappoint members for, you know, a longer period of time as we go through Phase Two of the Governance Committee process, where they start to look at the bylaws and they start to get into a little bit more deeper into some of the structural things that they want to evaluate and bring forward to the Selectmen about some of their concerns. So, that's going to be going forward.
Excuse me, Michael, are you going to be at least querying them to see if any of them want to bail out, after all the fun they've had in the first six months?
I'm not sure I'm going to give them that option.
Okay.
No, but some of them agreed to do it for a six-month duration, so I'm going to, I will have to go back to them and ask them if they will continue. If they don't, then that slot will open up, and we'll look for some more people.
You volunteering, Ellen?
No. I'm just trying to help you out, Dick. The Police Committee, the, I'm sorry, the Fire Building Committee has been aggressively moving forward in hiring an owner's project manager. The Committee received 12 applicants. Those applicants were reduced down to six that we interviewed. Out of those six applicants, for an hour interview each, we've narrowed that down to two applicants that we're in the final review of selecting one of them. Both of them came out, you know, relatively equal in our analysis, and we went back and asked them to convince us why we should hire them versus the other. This should be finalized this week, and the Fire Station Building Committee will be in a position where we hope to enter into a contract over the next week or so and move this project forward.
The meeting's tomorrow morning, right?
We're meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30. The School Committee, Building Committee met last night. They approved the budget to MSBA. That has been sent so that we can be invited into the MSBA pipeline for July 30. There's a training conference on building new fire stations that's going to be held in Baltimore, Maryland, in the middle of July for a day. I am going to be authorizing a few members of the Committee to go to that. The timing is perfect. This is nationwide, how fire stations are built, as we're going forward with the OPM, and we're hoping to have the new OPM go down there as well, to make sure that this Committee is on the cutting edge of everything, to make sure that they have all the knowledge they need as they go forward into the process.
And where will those funds be coming from, Michael?
They'll be coming from the Fire Station Fund. We have, we have received an extensive public records request for the Southern Sky Solar Project on the Carver landfill. This includes any and all records from anyone who's, lives under the sun, that's been involved in this project from the duration of time, et cetera. So, we're in the process of working with Town Council, because once the work effort exceeds $10, then the town is required to provide a good faith written estimate on the cost to comply with that. So, you know, my philosophy's always been, if it's something simple and we can, you know, copy it in half an hour, 10 minutes, then we give it to someone. If they require us to review Council's record, review the Planning Board's records, review every employee's records in Town Hall, review the Selectmen's records, the Town Administrator's records, the staff's records, well, that takes time, and the taxpayers shouldn't pay for 30 hours of work for a public records request. That's why we're allowed to charge for that. So, we're going to be going forward and preparing a cost appraisal for that.
Excuse me, Michael, does that also include, they're going to want records from Executive Session, or are those still off limits until those records are voted on to be released?
They are off, they are not available until the contract's been executed, but that should be coming momentarily. We have the annual GATRA agreement, which goes from July 1st through June 30th. From Francis Gay, the GATRA Director, this is administered through Carol, and I just need authorization to sign this annual agreement.
So, can we go forward with that?
I move we authorize Town Administrator to sign the agreement.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Five-zero, four.
Jack Hunter is working on the Clearwell Cost Estimate, and so far, the revised project estimate is $196,000. That's a little less than we had mentioned at our last meeting for expanding the North Carver Water District for additional water storage capacity. So, this is still the engineering estimate, and we're going to be moving forward to put that out to bid. The Conservation Commission, at their last meeting on June 18th, voted unanimously to recommend that I appoint Brooke Monroe as the position of the Part-Time Conservation Agent. Brooke was brought on in May to serve as a consultant for a project that was, that had just popped up, that the Commission needed an agent to review. Brooke has a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Science and Natural Resource Development from the University of Rhode Island. She's a member of the Mass Association of Wetland Scientists. She, at one point in her career, worked for Mass DEP. She's worked for several consulting firms. She served as an interim conservation agent for the Town of Canton. She has 30-plus years' experience of the field of natural resource development, environmental science, and she's been working since 1994 as her own, for her own firm, as an environmental consultant. So, with this, Jack Hunter and I met with her this morning, and she has agreed to accept the position, subject to the Board of Selectmen not vetoing that, and she will be starting at a grade D, Step 1, as a salary, and she'll be looking to start July 7. So, with this, you then have 15 days to veto this appointment or to waive your right to veto that.
Is that something you want to do now, Mr. Chairman, to go ahead and waive that veto right? Are we going to agree with that, and you can go ahead and hire?
I don't know just how you want to handle that. Can we do that, or you want to just, our next meeting...
Be July 8th.
So, that would be...
July 15th, that's right.
It's the 15th.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be beyond the 14 days, so if you want to make some kind of a motion, I would think that that would cover...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we waive our veto authority on this appointment and allow the Town Administrator to go ahead and appoint the individual as our new part-time conservation agent.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Any discussion?
She seems very well-qualified. I mean, I take Jack Hunter's, and, Michael, you've been working with her, and Sarah, do you have any feedback on Brooke from being...
No, I don't.
No? Okay.
No, and I'm going to rely on the Conservation Commission. They're the ones that are going to be working with her, and they voted unanimously, because they liked the work that she was doing, so I'm putting a lot of faith into their recommendation.
Okay, ready to vote on that? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, it's five-zero, supporting that motion. Michelle? It's five zero, supporting that motion. Michelle?
I'm also going to be moving forward, not for tonight, but it'll be in your packet in the next week or so for an appointment to the Conservation Commission for Tony Rello that has the approval of the Conservation Commission's Chairman for adding a member, because we know they're down some members, so I'll be moving that forward, but you get that in your packet. Let's see, you also have in your information here a deed in lieu of foreclosure. This, this just needs to be signed by the Board of Selectmen.
So, we need a motion?
Yeah, we would need a motion to, to authorize the Board to execute this, this deed in lieu of foreclosure.
Okay. Anybody have a, make to make a motion, or?
I'll make the motion for purposes of discussion, to accept the deed in lieu of foreclosure.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yes, why are we doing this?
Need to get the email from Town Council. This is something the Town's been working on. Give me one second. Yeah, this is something that Kathy Klein at Koppelman and Page has been working on for the Town, and she was able to finish doing the title rundown on the property. There are no outstanding encumbrances, so her authorization is to go forward and have, have this executed.
But why are we, why are we doing this? What is the, is it a DPW easement?
This is for the Everett Street property.
Excuse me?
Everett, on Old Wareham Road. This, this happened before I got here, so I really can't give you the detail.
Where is Old Wareham Road?
I don't think Michael would know.
Well, I've never heard of Old Wareham Road.
Maybe a fire dispatcher might have a clue.
No. The only old Wareham Street I know is Wareham Street. I don't know, but-
It's a very-
I'm pretty familiar with some of the older roads in town.
It says, first it says Old Wareham Road, then it says Old Wareham Street, being the road from Ellis Furnace to Bodfish Bridge. I, I don't even know where those are.
Ellis Furnace to Bodfish?
But I guess my main question is, why are we doing this? Is there some municipal purpose, or is the panic okay with it? I mean, I guess they are.
Well, they're recommending it, so they're okay with it.
Why are they giving us, what exactly are they giving us and why, I guess? That's my question.
Can we table it and get more information?
All right, so this is one of the tax foreclosures that then happened where this property was derelict for payment of taxes. So the Town, the Treasurer Collector moved forward a while ago, probably about two years ago, to move forward on taking this property. So it has to do with taxes, for failure of payment of taxes. So the Land Court would have given authority to take this.
Yeah, with all due respect, I, I have to agree. I mean, where you, talking about Ellis Furnace to Bodfish Bridge, we really need to have some attempt to give us at least a fairly modern road, the roads that were in effect for at least the last forty years. So we'll have a better idea. I'm assuming this is in South Carver somewhere, probably near Wareham Street, but if we could get-
We could table that to the next meeting.
Yeah.
I, I think so.
And I think maybe a map might be a good idea.
Yeah.
Might have fun trying to find someone who knows anything about it.
Yeah, maybe Paul could come in.
Clark might be the only one left.
Yeah.
Michael, do you think Paul could come in and explain it?
Mr. Chairman, I move we table this to the next, to our July eighth meeting to give the Town Administrator more time to give us more detailed information. Whatever, whatever our next July meeting is.
Second there? Anybody?
I can.
Okay, okay, any other discussion on that one? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the five zero, supporting that table motion? All right, Mr. Malinowski, you've got any?
I do, a couple more items. One, I want to talk about health insurance very quickly. The Gateway Health Group, we had a meeting on Tuesday of this week going through comparing what our current plans are to what other systems are having, including the Mayflower Health Group, the Southeast Mass Health Group, and GIC. So the whole Gateway Health Group is looking to potentially piggyback with another system to save money or to redo our existing system with going with one provider. So this is something that's being explored by all of the towns that are part of it as a cost-effective way of reducing some of our future healthcare insurance. None of this would happen for 2014 because we're already locked into a three-year contract, but right now we're looking for FY sixteen. So FY fifteen, we're locked in, which starts in a couple of days. But the following year, we're exploring all different options. And we will need to come back and work with making some decisions sometime in the fall on which way to go. Also, working with the Police Chief, Town Meeting authorized thirty thousand dollars to go forward and improve the technology in that department to bring that in compliance with FBI standards and also the SEGA standards, which is the Criminal Justice Information System. So the Chief and I are trying to get this up and running, and hopefully we'll have it done by the second or third week in July to move that forward. So that was, this is, this was our critical IT issue that we needed to do. So when we had an initial analysis, this is where we've been focused on, on this, and hence the Capital Outlet Committee approved the funding, as, as did Town Meeting. Let's see, I think my last item that I have is Jeff Nutting. Facilitation meeting. In the spring, we, the Town had its first facilitation meeting, which, you know, unfortunately happened right before the Town Meeting and the elections. And not all members could participate, and some members were leaving the Board at that point and, and had a different level of interest in that, that, that meeting. As we go forward in planning out our FY fifteen, or really as we're starting to look at our FY sixteen budget, starting in the fall, I thought it would be more appropriate to have this facilitation meetings annually in September. Because that's the time when we're starting to gear up for the next fiscal year. In the spring, we're winding down the year, we're prepping for Town Meeting, there's elections. In the summer, not a lot gets done, just because things are slower, and you're still trying to close out the books for the previous fiscal year, which take through September to close out. But come September is when we're starting to trigger this to move forward. I have reached out to, to, to Mr. Nutting, and he has given me some dates in September that he's available. And what I'd like to do is to run those dates by the Board. I think right now we're looking at meeting September first and September sixteenth as our regularly scheduled meetings. Now, September has five Tuesdays. So he is available for the twenty-third, if you wanted to meet that evening. And he also has Monday the fifteenth, and Monday the twenty-ninth, and Tuesday the thirtieth. My suggestion would be Tuesday the twenty-third.
I was going to say, just keeping it on Tuesday might work out better. That, I don't know what you guys think.
The time slot that we would need to be involved in the session is going to be what?
It'll be about another three-hour session.
So we would start at six or seven?
I think we start, I think we started at five-thirty before, and we had some sandwiches, and we went five-thirty to eight-thirty-nine. We can start as late as six, but, you know, I would say around five-thirty or six for start time. So you, the suggestion is the twenty-third, or which, two dates? I, I would suggest the twenty-third and maybe the thirtieth as a backup in case something comes up for anybody. But if those dates are available for the members, and it is a Tuesday, that, you know, we look to book him at that and, and go through that process again. I think a lot of positive things came out of that. The Board has adopted Code of Conduct. It, it developed your own Selectmen's policies. We have some, some more tasks to deal with as we move forward. We need to look at an HR system and how we're going to do employee evaluations. We need to work on developing a budget schedule going forward so that we can have an orderly budget fashion that starts in the fall and doesn't, and, and we have all our meetings versus rushing like we did this, this year. And again, there were extenuating circumstances why this year happened that way. But we should get into those type of processes. So I think there are some important things for us to discuss in moving forward.
Well, we had budgeted for, for that each year, so you're just, you just want to have it earlier, which makes sense.
Correct.
What was your backup date on that, Michael?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth?
If you could just let us know as soon as possible through email so we can lock it into our calendars.
Well, he's available those dates, so if you're all available the twenty-third, then let's vote to make that the date, and then the thirtieth the backup, just in case something happens.
Do you want to do this motion, or you want?
Make the motion?
Do we make a motion? I'll make a motion to conduct the facilitation meeting on September twenty-third.
With a backup of September thirtieth if needed.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, I'm going to have to check my calendar. This is not on the agenda, so I was unable to-
I know I'm going to have a little difficulty because I'll be driving. But I'll, if it's like five-thirty or six o'clock, if I'm a half hour late, well, so be it, but I'll, I'll-
So we can plan for six o'clock, just to accommodate that. So we're planning six to nine on the twenty-third.
Michael's not helping you with the bog this fall?
Wasn't that part of the-
Going to be bogging all over the place.
He'll get me out there.
With a big truck. Yep, I'll come pick him up, take it for a ride. All right, is there any further discussion? You're going to wait until you clear in your calendar?
I, I wasn't on the agenda, so I'm not prepared to, I don't know.
Okay, so six PM.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm just going to abstain.
Okay, so we got four, zero, one, one abstention. Four in favor. All right, okay.
And my final comment is that Town Meeting is over. We did it in one night.
Congratulations.
And I think the, the Town, you know-
Really? We almost hit twelve AM.
Well, it was a great job by everybody, and appreciate everyone that took the time out of their evening to, to attend that five-hour session. A lot was accomplished, and it's going to have long-lasting positive impacts on the community. So thank you all for your help.
Okay. May I, before we start our Selectmen's Comment period, I wanted to add on to the meeting with the Building Committee that Mr. Malinowski referred to. And he talked about the budgeting of the four hundred and ten thousand, and their document is sent to the, to the MSBA. But we did meet last night, the whole Building Committee. We met early, and we visited all four potential sites for the, for the new elementary school. Remember that one is the B-three, they call it. That's the Governor John Carver School present footprint. And that would be a renovation and, and additional structure on that. The second site over there is the athletic fields and parking lot. If you face the Governor John, it would be to the right, and that's a roughly seven-acre projection. And then the other two sites are at the high school, junior high school. As you drive in, the first site would be the ballfield site, which would be on the left, and that's about ten-acre site, which would mean that if the school was built there, additional ballfields would be developed in the back part of the property. And I think the fourth site is the one, the wooded area between Pond Street and the road that goes into the school. And that's approximately ten acres. So those are the four sites that we looked at, visited, and discussed afterwards. And then made the motion to push the budget that was prepared by Mr. Malinowski and the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Manager. So that's sent off. So we're, we got the first end. Of course, they mentioned the big step was that the Town Meeting unanimously supported to go forward with the school. So that's the most up-to-date progress that we can mention on that. Okay, thank you. Okay. Selectmen's Comments. And, let's see, did we start with you last time, Helen?
No, I started with me last time.
So somebody else want to start? Clark, how about you?
I'll be in and out of different stations.
You're quiet tonight. We thought we'd give you the first chance here.
Yeah, a couple of things. I wanted to ask for the July meeting if we could ask the schools to come in and sort of give us a somewhat brief, if that's possible, sort of state of the school. I think getting on the Board when I did, and actually, I don't think a lot of the presentations were made this year, as they have been in the past. And I, I would sort of, with everything, everything's been focused on the, on the building and, in the new building and so forth, and yet we had more layoffs, teacher layoffs again this year, so I'd sort of like to hear where they're at, what the, what the health of the system is overall, what's going on in the system. So sort of a delayed presentation, if we could. And then for the August meeting, to do the same thing with police and fire. Just, you know, not, doesn't have to be, you know, in great depth, but just sort of a, a state-of-the-department type of discussion. And then I'm thinking in September, I would like to, and this doesn't necessarily have to happen with the Board, but perhaps you could report back on, we've, we've talked about the potential of having Town Meeting take place prior to the elections. You know, we talked about there's, there's some, it seems to make a lot of sense that you don't have a new Board coming in into the middle of the budget process and trying to play catch-up. That might be aggressive, you know, that, I mean, going from usually holding it in June to moving it up to April. But maybe we could start to take some steps towards at least discussing how that would, how that could possibly work. It would mean really moving the Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, Capital Outlet Committee, their hearings and so forth, way up in, in the process. But I think part of the reason we're even discussing it is that what we've noticed over the last few years is when the Governor's Budget comes out in January, there seems to be very little difference between the monies that get projected to come to us then versus what ends up coming out. I mean, within, you know, fifty thousand dollars, maybe, maybe a hundred thousand, which obviously we desperately need every penny, but I don't know that we should be hanging on as long as we, as long as we do. And I just think it makes more sense to have some consistency with the Board going into it. So maybe if in September, we can begin those discussions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Helen, would you like to go next?
Oh, sure. Two things. Dick, as Chair, had appointed me to the Plymouth County Advisory Board, and I attended the annual meeting last week. Very interesting and informative about what's going on in our county, and that the Plymouth Commissioners that are in place right now are doing a fabulous job. I guess just real briefly, in terms of our Plymouth County, they were ten years behind on performing audits, and this new commission has really ramped up, and all the audits are almost up to date. The good news is there was nothing found, which is a great thing, and that's what you always hope. But it's also very prudent and important that audits are conducted on an ongoing basis. And the only other point that was brought up was that they received a grant for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar dredge machine for the coastal waters. And of course, I asked about ponds and lakes, if we will ever be able to utilize it. And from what they were saying, and it got kind of heated after discussion came up about the dredge, is that in order to receive this grant, it has to be purchased for saltwater. Just purchased. And then the, one of the Commissioners had emphasized that it could be used for lakes and ponds down the road. But they had to purchase it under the grant as, for just the ocean waters, the seawater, so. It was very interesting, and they brought us a new updated handy-dandy Plymouth County map. And we had one point seven-two percentage of the vote. They give you portions, but it's really each person represents a vote, but I just found it funny when I saw one point seven-two. The other thing, this is more to the residents, and if anybody else is out on Facebook. As a daughter- a daughter of a dad that was self-employed for many, many years, I know how important it is that you have a good reputation. Back in the day, if one person had a negative comment about a business, it might get to maybe ten people. For one negative, it automatically meant ten. Today, if a person says a negative about a company, it can have detrimental impact. What am I referring to? I've been out on Facebook, out on the cover, connection and the Carver group, and a few of our longtime businesses in this community are being hammered. And what it starts with is one comment on someone, and freedom of speech, it's very important that you have it. My only, I am imploring, I am begging people to at least please get the facts. If you are in the moment of being angry at a business, or even a person for that matter, take pause and take a deep breath, and try to get the facts, and just relax, and think about when you write something on that Facebook page, you're not only impacting a person, you could put somebody out of business, and it could hurt the community as well. Because some of these businesses that are being mentioned, I don't care if the business has only been open for a week, just please think about what you're doing, because every, negative feeds off a negative, you know that. So once one person says something negative, it skyballs, and then you have to sort through the truth. And so that's just my, I'm encouraging everybody, just really take a step back, take a deep breath. I understand when people get angry, you just want to go bang, 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 but please just think about it, because a few of the businesses have been long-term businesses, and it's not fair to any business who are just, they're trying to survive out there in a very difficult economy, and that doesn't help them. So that's just my friendly request.
Thank you, Helen. Sarah?
Thank you. I promised I'd follow up with more information about what the Young People's Alliance of Carver is doing. This is a youth center down at the Ben Ellis Building. They're having three summer sessions this week, this summer. The first is this week, June twenty-third to June twenty-seventh, nine A.M. to twelve P.M. These sessions are for fifth to eighth graders, and sign-ups are open all the time, anytime. The kids can come for the morning Arts Week session, or they can stay all day from nine to four. And I really urge people to at least look into this. The email is ypackinc@gmail.com. The phone is five oh eight four six five thirteen ninety-nine. Our second session is Science Week, which will run from July twenty-first through July twenty-fifth, and the third session is called Ypack Week, and that's August eighteenth to August twenty-second. So I'm just trying to encourage people to at least get information. Sign-ups are open. If you missed the one in May, don't worry about it. There are people there every day. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Helen?
All right, while it is getting into the summer season, people are planning their vacations and outings and things like that, so it's not too early to go ahead and start thinking about the Carver Old Home Day, which is the fourth Saturday in July the twenty-sixth. Of course, one of the big events is the clam bake, and I would really like to see our town administrator, maybe clear his calendar, bring his family down, so they go ahead and enjoy a clam bake, and maybe he could get here early enough to help in the preparation. It'll be a good education for them.
Not a problem.
But also, there's a lot of activities going on, and it's a chance for, you know, the town to, you know, to get together. You usually find a lot of former residents, you know, people that have moved away, they come back for Old Home Day. So just ask you to mark that on your calendar. Go ahead, Don.
Would you check this for Wednesday?
I have to check with Joy, either Joyce or Elaine. I'll double-check on that, but you'll have that.
They'll go fast.
Yeah, they go fast, and, but it will be in the Carver Reporter. In fact, it might have already, there might have already been the first notice about it. But keep your eye on the Carver Reporter for bake tickets, because they do go fast, because it is a good feed. And just keep that open.
Okay, thank you, Helen. What Helen went over on this bloggers thing, don't forget, we adopted, the Carver Board of Selectmen suggested bloggers' code of conduct.
That's right.
And if you read through that, you know, it's like, one, is libelous, knowingly false, or misrepresents another person. Those things are, there's a whole four paragraphs on concerns that we, the Board of Selectmen, voted on. So that adds to what you were saying. The, I wanted to see if our past chairman used to always say something regarding, we pray for our servicemen and troops, and I wondered if we're doing a prayer, is there a way we can incorporate that into our prayer?
Sure.
Sure.
I would think so, and I'd also like to include the first responders too, those are the people that are on the front line.
You know, rather than, I was gonna say, tonight, we pray that our troops and servicemen and women stay safe. Well, if we can incorporate, if we're gonna do the prayer, we're gonna do that too?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Again, that prayer was just more to, you know, keep it nondenominational, and as a start, just to keep it very simple. But I, who was it? Mr. Glass had gotten up and spoken, and it said, if you can personalize it once in a while, but since we're under a probationary period on it, it's like...
Well, I voted against it, but I figured, we're doing the prayer, we voted for it as a board, and maybe we should include the troops and the servicemen in it.
I think that's wonderful.
Okay. I want to, we don't meet till after the Fourth of July, so we, I imagine my fellow members would like to say, we wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth of July.
Got it.
Most definitely.
Happy Fourth of July.
Any other comments from the selectmen? All right, let's move on. Waiving the fee for use of town property policy. Mr. Dunn has been helping us on that.
This is really the first chance. I kind of wanted to get town meeting out of the way first, and I started thinking about it, and rather than try to come up with something on my own for the board to look at, I thought I'd, you know, kind of poll the board here tonight, as to what organizations we all think should go ahead and probably be, have a waiver for the fee. One suggestion, you know, any town scout groups, I think, should be included on that list. Anything that's a fundraiser for any of the schools, be it music boosters or athletic boosters, something like that, that should be on the list. As far as religious, other things to look at, would be as free and open to the whole town. Anything that, anybody that's putting on a function like that, I would think, would also be subject to, you know, at least waiving the fee. And I'd just like to get input from everybody else before, and then what I'll do is, I'll take those notes and try to write something up for the next meeting, a more formalized policy.
Okay.
Well, I agree with you that it should absolutely be Carver-related, only like anything to do with the town. So if someone came in and wanted to do a fundraiser at Shertlift Park that was not part of the town, we would have to charge, because it could get, it's gonna be tough to narrow this down.
Exactly.
You know, and...
That's why I didn't want to tackle it myself without getting your input.
You don't want to offend any groups, or, so, but I think starting with town.
So, well, I guess to that point, let's say it's the American Heart Association coming in, and they want to use our town for a fundraiser, but they're based in Quincy. It's a charitable organization. Would your thinking, though, be it has to be a Carver-based charitable organization to waive the fee, or?
Yeah.
Well, we've already waived the fee once for the Thibodes for leukemia benefit. So, you know, I was originally thinking, you know, something that's, you know, helping cancer research, MS, something along those lines, we might want to consider.
So then you're leaning more towards any?
It's more, I was thinking originally more depending on what the function was for. You know, there are civic groups that go ahead and hold fundraisers in there, you know. Lions Club has done it before, United Parish has done it before, and they've been more fundraisers. And I don't think, I wasn't leaning towards them going ahead and being, having a fee waived. But again, anything for a medical, you know, I'm up to the wall of the board.
And you're talking specifically Shertlift Park?
Yes. Basically, I did research as far as Sampson's Pond, and maybe once every other year, the Scouts, Cub Scouts do a fishing tournament there, and I would think, you know, that would apply to that also. But ninety-nine percent of the other uses of Sampson's Pond are fishing tournaments by outside groups, and I don't see waiving that fee.
I was thinking about the cost of the town.
Right.
The, we do pick up trash at the beach, so we do incur a little expense there, Shertlift Park. The boat ramp, I'm not sure if there's barrels there. I think there is.
There is one.
That we do, I mean, you do have a little expense. I know what happened this past weekend, there was a group using the park on Saturday, and of course, the DPW doesn't pick up on the weekend. So the Farmers Market people dump the trash in the dumpsters up and back, or the dumpster. So, so it would be decent for Farmers Market on Sunday. But, I mean, when I'm looking at it, it seems to me that we almost have to do this per request, make a decision. But I don't know how you can set up a framework that's gonna apply in all situations.
That's a problem I had while I didn't, when I first started, that was just the problem. I was, how do you limit it?
Yeah, and I think if you do it on a one-by-one, that, you could really, it might become very, well, why'd you do it for them and not us?
Y-X, not Y.
You know?
It's gonna be hard to...
Very sensitive.
It's a policy set in place will be tough.
Right.
To put together.
I agree, the way is going to be tough.
Yeah, I mean, the actual expense, other than the DPW swinging by to empty the trash bins, is, and did normally the bathrooms get opened up for groups that utilize the...
Well, the Farmers Market does, but they do their own cleaning. There are volunteers that do the cleaning.
Oh, the bathrooms?
Yeah.
And maybe we could put that into the, the policy, is that we will waive the fee, but they have to clean up after themselves.
Dispose of their own trash.
Yeah, dispose of their own trash, and then we could just have it for any, I wouldn't do it for a political fundraiser, certainly, but for any nonprofit, like the American Heart Association, or anything that's helping.
Yeah, I mean, it even gets tough, for instance, like with the Lions, because any money we raise, we distribute to charity directly.
Right, so it's all charitable.
So that, I think the number of examples where we'd say no would be just if it's a private function. Someone would, you know, Alan wants to celebrate his birthday over there.
Right.
You know, then, you know, if...
Then you have to charge.
So if it's a non-charitable function, then they'd receive the charge. If it's a charitable function, then...
I think over the last ten years, we've averaged maybe two of those a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not gonna be a big moneymaker for us.
No. I think the town administrator would like to chime in.
Just a suggestion to consider is, you may want to look at doing a two-tiered system. So you actually have a test, that if it's a Carver nonprofit doing something for Carver, then they get a pass. And then if it's a nonprofit beyond that, it would have to come back to the board just to review, not that you wouldn't waive it, but you just want to review it. Some nonprofits are profitable, and they use the money to pay their executive directors and staff a lot of money that doesn't actually go to the cause. And I'm not saying you have any of those, it just, it just gives you one final check that's in there. So the easy ones are out of the way, just because they're standard, they're the Cub Scouts, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, whatever they may be. And those would, again, pass that initial test, and then the second tier would be something that maybe you still need to bring back to you.
I like that idea.
Okay. That would be something that you're gonna maybe consider some of these?
Yeah, I'll try to write something up. I'd like to hear, Sarah, have you got any ideas?
Well, your discussion made me think that I, it's a little off-topic now, but I should have mentioned that the Young People's Alliance of Carver just recently got our federal tax-exempt status, so it is a five oh one C-three.
Congratulations.
It's a nonprofit organization, and scholarships are available. We decided that our policy's no child is turned away. No explanations needed. If the family can't afford it, the kid's in anyway. I want people to know.
How long did that take to get that designation from the time you filed?
It took a little over six months.
It's actually getting a little quicker finally.
And our, the chair of the Board of Directors has called the IRS every morning at nine A.M. It was awful.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, with your permission and the concurrence of the board, I'll try to come up with something for the next meeting, and take it from there.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, reinstate the website committee. Motion or discussion?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairs, and I guess I'm the one who asked for this to be on here. I know the committee was disbanded some time ago. My feeling is that at some point, we really are going to need a website committee, whatever makeup. I think it's important for any decisions, or changes, or new ideas that come up, that we think might be a good idea to have on the website, should be presented by a committee in public, open meeting, transparency. And so I think eventually, we're going to find that we need to, someone needs to be doing maintenance, answering website emails, maybe looking at upgrades or new stuff that we want to do. So to me, that needs a committee. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but, so I'd like to make a motion to establish a website committee.
All right.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay.
I looked over some stuff. Steve Dewhurst had sent us some background information on the website committee as it existed before, and some of the needs and the, you know, pretty comprehensive outline of, you know, its current condition and the cost and so forth. I guess originally, we were paying something like thirty-eight hundred dollars a year, and then the website committee came in. And one thing I like about the idea of a website committee is that the cost was drastically reduced, and I think it was down to less than three hundred dollars a year for the maintenance of the committee. So if we could find, if we could put a committee together that everyone would be comfortable with, that could do the work, that'd be great. The only thing that occurs to me is, I know from talking to Michael, that when we had the technology consultant come through, part of what he looked at in looking at the entire IT culture of the town, school, because he did the schools and police, pretty much looked at everything, right?
Mm-hmm.
That included the website and so forth?
Correct.
So I, sort of coming into this, I guess I'm thinking a starting point is, because we do have to do something, you know, we have to maintain the website. I think it's, I haven't bopped around a lot of towns' different websites, but it seems to be very functional. See, when I've, even I've been able to go out and post an agenda, which is no small task. If I can do it, Helen, almost anybody, I think, can do it. That's what I'm saying, I guess. It's that simple, I guess, is the point I'm trying to make. So that, what I'm thinking is, would that consultant be someone that could come in and speak to us, possibly at the July meeting, and sort of, or is it, or is it better that you could simply give us materials instead of having them in, so we can understand what their recommendations are? I'm just, if there's been someone taking an outside look at things, I think maybe before moving forward, it'd be worthwhile just getting an outside perspective. I guess I get an internal bias probably towards our own committee, because it was functioning before. I know there was, there were some concerns and issues, and all those would have to be addressed, you know, before moving forward with the committee. But at the same time, you know, I think I'd be interested in an outside, third-party's look at it.
So to answer your question, earlier this year, we did have a consultant come in and review all of the technology in the town. And as a result of that, we primarily focused at that time on the critical need, which was the police station. And as I spoke about earlier today, we're gonna be moving forward with moving that along. In addition to that, we did start to look at some of the options for maintaining the website. I know when Jim Purcell was here, is that he made sure that there was no additional work being done by the committee on the website, following the directive of the Board of Selectmen. And one of the issues that has come up is security, is who has access to the website, what opportunities are there for access that shouldn't be given. So as a result, staff has been looking at several different options and several different vendors to go forward... to go forward in, in doing the website. And, um, we have prices that range, um, from twenty-seven hundred dollars, actually, from seventeen hundred dollars to twenty-seven hundred dollars, to a Cadillac version of nine thousand dollars a year. And what's key is that we build in the proper security components and allow the department heads to make the changes that are there. So, what I'm looking to do at this point is to work with the staff in the, in the town hall and to come back with a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. In doing so, this will all be coordinated with an outside consultant, just to provide that technical component. So, to answer your question, the long way around it, is that whether at the July or the August meeting, I think we can come back with a report and hopefully, um, with a presentation from an outside consultant on that too. That was done in collaboration with the staff that are gonna be the users, that are gonna be able to make the site more dynamic.
Could, could I also ask that that consultant meet with members of the prior website committee? Um, because I don't wanna throw out the option of, of an internal committee handling it. I mean, I, I, I know that there were some, uh, concerns expressed by citizens about the committee, uh, and, uh, you know, I, I think it's possible that we might be able to address those concerns if, if we have a committee, you know, from the town going forward. So, I would, I, I think it would be appropriate to have that consultant, to get a, to give us a complete picture.
Sure, absolutely.
Because that's almost like throwing out the idea of having our own internal website, uh, committee, and I think that needs to be on the table as, as a viable option. Uh, and I think that the consultant would need to meet with some of those ex-members in order to be able to determine the level of expertise that can be brought to bear. Because, again, you know, I mean, I know it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but, you know, I, I think paying less than three hundred dollars a year versus three thousand, or five thousand, or nine thousand, if the Cadillac was appealing. So, I, I would ask that that take place as well with the consultant, if that's, if, you know.
Absolutely, and also, we have the report from Tim Reed, who did a report in, in May, almost a year ago, um, on that, that the consultant has, uh, available as well. And, um, I mean, there's no doubt that, from what I understand, is, is the town's website was defunct at one point, and the website committee, through the hard work of the committee members, led by the Chairman, did a lot of positive things to build that back up. And, uh, we're blessed to have that happen. I think as we look forward, as we'll come back with the recommendations, uh, from the staff, from the consultant, in collaboration with the website committee, and, um, and, and also this, um, this technical review that was done a year ago by Tim Smith.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Yeah, I have to agree with Ron, I would like to see the town administrator to come back, either at our July or August meeting, with a pros and cons of each of the companies that are under there, and pros and cons of having a, our own in-house, uh, website committee. You know, include that in the analysis. Uh, I have to admit, you know, I do have the fear that, I think with this board, we'd be able to pull off the, uh, website committee, uh, but that, you know, as we know, every year, the board changes. And the last, I think part of the problem was the last time the board, it became a political lightning rod, if you will.
Through you, Mr. Chair. There were a lot of facts brought up during, it became possibly a political lightning rod because of the people that were involved. However, there were a lot of facts that were brought, that were kinda undermined in a sense.
Right, I wasn't, I wasn't part of the board. Excuse me, Ms. Maron?
Sure.
I wasn't part of the board, and I'm trying to stay away from that a little bit, but that's a good example of, you know, that's one of the problems we could have if we're not real careful of going with an in-house website committee, which is why I'd like that to be, you know, brought on, and I like pros and cons of all four options, basically. Also, I'd like to know, how many surrounding towns, what, how do they handle it? Do any of the surround, you know, towns in southeastern Massachusetts and the Cape, do they actually have their own in-house, uh, website committee, or do they contract it out? Uh, another concern I have is because we're gonna be doing a lot more in-town with the computers. Uh, so you're talking about payroll, different, uh, doing a lot of billing now, a lot more, gonna be doing a lot more through the town computers and websites. So, that really brings up a security issue that we have to be very careful about. So, I would agree that I think we really need the town administrator to give a full review of all that and bring the options to us, all four of those options.
All right.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, since I was on the board and, um, I'm kinda sorta like the Lone Ranger in terms of my concerns at that point in time regarding the website, because Sarah was on the board, however, she's, uh, related to the company involved. I absolutely agree with getting an outside consultant, because the website is gonna become more and more important, so is the overall technology in the company. Um, when you mentioned the previous committee being involved, the only thing I ask is, right now, it's limited to the original few, um, Ellen Blanchard, Bob Bentley, and Michelle Cohen. Phil Shannon, who was an expert programmer and computer person, was unfairly let go because he didn't make the meetings on time, even though, at the time, the committee was supposed to be meeting at seven o'clock, it was an open discussion. And he was very honest and upright when he, um, got appointed to the position that, because he works in Cambridge, that he couldn't make it. So, I think he was unfairly let go, and I think he can bring a lot to this committee and to discuss with the outside consultant. Since it is on the topic, I did, I have been looking, since the website was disbanded, the code was supposed to have been given to, I believe it was Alan Smith, I don't know exactly what Mike O'Donnell had, um, you know, finalized with what was going on with the website committee, but it is still being handled by one person. I would like to talk about what we do in the interim, because I continue to be concerned, based in the audit supports my concern, that one person is running the show. I went out to the website, and it clearly says here, here is eight pages of code, and this is what I am concerned about, and this is why we need to make a temporary decision on what to do. This is like eight pages of written code that only one person can handle. And it clearly states here, no part of this software may be used, copied, or modified without the express written consent of Stephen C. Dewhurst. I have a problem with that. And I have a pro, that there is one person that has control of a town website. So, all as I ask is that we decide what we're gonna temporarily do. He was asked not to be part of this, I believe Jim Purcell. I don't know if you wanna elaborate on that, but there is still work being done on this, um, town website when we haven't made a decision to go forward yet.
Pardon, Helen, but, uh, Helen, but, uh, we gotta try to stay away from the names, because as soon as you start bringing names in, then, in a sense, we have to allow them to defend themselves, you know? I don't wanna get into a back and forth.
Sure, I apologize for that, I just, I, I apologize for that, but there's just one person that's controlling the website, so.
Basically, a single-pointed person.
Thank you, single-pointed person. So, all as I ask is that we, um, figure out what we're gonna do temporarily, because as far as I remember, it was, um, could run on its own for six months, and it seems like it is, for the most part. Um, there may be some tweaking being done, I'm not sure, so.
I'll, I'll mention, uh, I, I talked to a few people in the town hall, and it, when it got sus, the website committee got suspended, it kinda went on its own. It wasn't functioning quite as well, according to this person, after, um, the website committee was disbanded. So, uh, but it has been functioning.
Right.
And, um, to some extent. So, my question is, is we wanna move, we wanna go forward to July.
Yep.
So, we're not really putting it in suspension much longer.
Okay.
If we, uh.
Till we get the, sure, I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Michael, would you be able to have something for us by the July meeting?
Um, until I talk to the, the rest of the staff and the, the consultant, I don't wanna commit to the July fifteenth, I'm, I'm gonna shoot for that.
It's something you're shooting for.
But, you know, I don't wanna lock us into that if it ends up being August.
Do we have money in the budget?
It's moving along.
Do we have money in the budget if we decide to go a private contractor route?
We do, we do have money to go a private route, and I, I think to address some of the concerns, you know, what Jim Purcell left with me was information that no one was to modify or change the website. And, you know, without notice to myself, to, to Elaine, or to Ellen Smith, there should be no activity on the website but for the department heads that have access, or committee chairs that can post minutes, post agendas, um, and, and associated town information. Um, but beyond that, um, there, there really should be no activity going on, because no one is authorized.
Um, I think we need to, to have Mr. Dewhurst come up, because his name's been brought up.
I have.
So, uh, but I caution, we gotta be careful on names.
Um, just a point of personal preference.
Excuse me, just, could you go ahead and identify yourself, because usually everybody that comes up, we're gonna.
Steve Dewhurst, I was, uh, former Chair of the Website Committee, Forest Street, North Carver. Um, the only thing I wanna address here, uh, of, of course, the board will do what they want with the website. Um, I was in contact with Wareham and Plymouth Website, uh, IT Directors today, and, you know, we, our website is just better than theirs, and they, they admit that, and it's pretty much free. But that's a side point. The point I do wanna address is the assumption that I went off in some sort of cowboy way and maintained the website when I wasn't supposed to, and that's just not true. Um, I had a long talk with Jim Purcell today, and what, apparently, there's a misunderstanding. Um, I was there and somebody else was there when he gave me permission to quietly make sure the website was working. The Town Clerk's Office was very concerned, they would be in violation of open meeting law if they didn't, had a failed website. So, I was asked by Jim Purcell to do it. He does not recall that, he recalls something different, but I, again, I may be mistaken, but I don't think so. There was another person there who also, um, heard the request. Um, other documentation, um, I, I have emails to, uh, Jim Purcell on ten twenty-three, a couple of those. I have an email to Michael O'Donnell, who was Chair of the Boss at the time, um, asking for direction from him. He directed me to Jim Purcell and said, do, basically, do whatever Jim says you should do. At which point, we took that decision, that I should quietly make sure the website kept working. And then, on the seventeenth of November, shortly after that, I had a long email to Jim Purcell, to the former website committee, a couple other people, Assistant Town Administrator, saying exactly what I thought needed to be done to keep the set website running in writing, and that's exactly what I did. I did not go beyond that. Um, and there were some other emails back and forth to, uh, the interim Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, and myself, indicating when problems came up and I was resolving them. On January twentieth, um, I sent an email to our new Town Administrator, asking for guidance on the website. And he was understandably quite busy and never got back to me on that. Um, I also had an email on the twenty-eighth, the Assistant Town Administrator, and a copy to our new Town Administrator, describing how I was maintaining the website in order to keep them informed. On February twelfth, I had an email to our Town Administrator, asking for direction, saying, please tell me what to do, even if it's just to keep what I'm doing right now. And, again, it's busy times, you know, I, I, you have all my sympathy, but I got no direction, so I just kept going in the same direction, maintaining the website, as I was requested to do. And then, of course, I, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator got a couple of, uh, overly-long, uh, documents from me about the website. The only point I wanna make, uh, well, I can make two more points very quick. One is that I did not, in any way, shape, or form, go outside the bounds I was requested to do. I also wanna point out that it's quite a serious matter when you accuse a professional of professional misbehavior. I'm a professional computer scientist and have been for thirty-six years. I have a code of conduct, and I have a lot of clients who won't hire somebody who does not follow those professional requirements. It's very serious. You don't accuse a doctor of making his patients sick so he can cure them, that's libelous. You don't accuse an information professional of misbehavior in this field, that's also libelous. Especially if the individual involved is no longer a town employee. Um, and just a side point, um, I, I, um, when I worked on the website, uh, I wrote about twenty thousand lines of code. This isn't the HTML, this is the actual program code. It's probably the most secure municipal website in the state. And I'd be, I've been offering to give people guided tours through it. I'm sure it put you right to sleep, but it is a multiple-tiered security system, and it's very difficult to break into. It's not, nothing's immune, but it's quite secure.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this point, I think we're getting really elaborate, because, um.
I don't wanna get into, uh, an argument back and forth.
I, I agree, I just wanted to clear my name.
I think that what we've gotta do now, as a board, is gotta decide where we go.
An outside consultant.
Okay, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Dewhurst.
Well, and if, and if I could just clarify, I just wanna make sure that the outside consultant looks at all options.
Correct.
Including an internal website committee.
Correct, I think we all agree to.
We agree with that, yeah.
All right, so.
We need a motion on that?
I have a motion before us, do you want to amend that motion?
Well, I'd like to amend it so that the outside consultant looks at all options, as well as talking to the former members of the website committee.
Including Phil Shannon.
Well, if we open it up to applicants, that would solve that situation.
Just, just talking to former members.
Former members, right now.
Leave it general like that.
Okay, so, our motion is.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask for clarification, because the motion was to create, to re-establish the website committee.
No, this, this motion is to have the outside consultant.
Okay, but we.
No, but he's right, the original motion was to create, recreate the website, so we will have to deal with that one first.
You've gotta, we've gotta retract that first motion, or if the amendment is going to cover the whole, uh, topic.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think it really, we need to deal with the first, uh, motion, and then we'll make a new one, um, delegate, instructing the Town Administrator to, um, do with the review.
Uh, Sarah, would you wanna retract your first motion?
Sure, that's fine, as, as long as the motion that is made now includes what Ron suggested.
The second, who seconded that? We retract that, okay, okay, that, no, okay, now, now, uh, uh, we need to deal with the new motion, okay?
Why don't you go ahead and do that, 'cause I like how you put it in.
Me?
Yeah.
I can't remember what I said two seconds ago.
Try.
Uh.
You're quiet.
Make, make a motion, make a motion that, uh, the, that we use the outside, had that, that we ask the outside consultant to explore options for the, uh, future, uh, maintenance, uh, and, and utilization of the Town of Carver website, uh, and including, uh, review, you know, reviewing outside vendors, as well as interviewing members of the past website committee, uh, and including, uh, among the options, the idea of having an internal town committee handle the website in addition to outside vendors.
I'll second that.
All, all members, I said, all past members.
Is there any additional discussion that hasn't already been, been set? Okay, all right, okay. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, five-zero.
And you'll try to make it happen for July.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, Michael, could you tell us who that consultant is, since apparently you've been working with him?
Rob Bonnell, I think he met with you.
Rob, no, he's, he never met with me.
Oh, he met with you, okay.
Rob, who?
Bonnell.
Brunel?
Bonnell.
How do you spell that?
B-O-N-N-E-L-L, Rob Bonnell.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next part of our agenda, minutes. Have you had a chance? Those are extensive minutes that we're looking at, 'cause it includes the town meeting, the warrant, the articles.
Those are expensive minutes.
They were, they were fine. You got my change right?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I move we accept the minutes of the June tenth, two thousand and fourteen Board of Selectmen meeting?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's, okay, uh, are there any omissions or additions or corrections that you want to make? Anybody?
Given the length of the meeting, I thought it was a fine job done by Michelle. Given the length of the meeting, I thought it was a fine job done by Michelle, getting these together, good job.
Yes, somebody commented, it was the longest town meeting session ever, but we got it done.
Are we done?
Okay, uh, no more discussion on the minutes. All those in favor of supporting the minutes of June tenth, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, accept the minutes of June tenth. All right, now, we have, uh, second public comment period, so folks, is there anybody who would like to make any comments? Further comments? All right, okay, thank you. Um, now we will go to executive session, and we don't got any.
Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Oh, wow, no executives?
Holy smoke, that's almost to the minute.
Not, not really, no, well, not, not for coffee purposes.
Okay, uh, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
This is very cool.